I have seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Uh, motion passes. Moving on to community comment. I do not see anyone here for that, so we will go on to presentations and reports. Um, up first tonight is our Carver County Attorney Mark Metz. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
A little bounce in your step tonight.
Well, yeah.
It's in Carver.
Yeah, right. So, uh, Madam Mayor and council members and staff, thanks for having me. My name's Mark Metz. I'm the Carver County Attorney. And last year, presentation was via Zoom, so it's good to see everybody in person. And we're doing more of that in Carver County as well. This is my opportunity to present to the various cities and go through our prosecution contract. And I'd like to highlight some things that we're doing in our office as well at the end about vets court and drug court and how we're doing with the pandemic and our, any backlog in our system and other, other possible trends. So I know you've seen this a lot, but I think it's good to refresh our contract with you. And as I always indicate, it's a, it's an honor for our office to prosecute for 10 of 11 cities. And I think as we mentioned before, we, we pride ourselves on providing a high level of service um, and coordinating for the various cities. So this year, um, as I indicated, we serve 10 of 11 cities. So Chanhassen's the only city that contracts privately with a law firm. And they've been doing that historically for many, many years. And um, so I think Carver County is pretty unique with other counties that actually have the county attorney's office that prosecute misdemeanors and petty misdemeanors. And I really believe it's, it's the best way to provide the services and justice throughout the state because we already have the infrastructure. We have a high focus on our victim coordination. And we're centrally located and we designate staff prosecutors for these types of cases. And our board is committed to having us do this, so they provide some subsidies, so the cities can afford it as well. So how do we determine the contract fees? I did a pretty deep dive and audit maybe two years ago to reassess, well, what are our costs? And it's, it's probably not as accurate to the penny as maybe private businesses you could to see, well, you know, how much revenue, how much do we make? What do we cost, you know, for the hours? Cause we don't keep track of our hours. But I spoke with our staff to determine what percentage of time do they provide for the cities prosecuting these cases? And we, we determined based upon that, you know, whether it was, and I don't have it in front of me, but you know, a number of attorneys and staff and what percentage is that, what are their salaries generally? So we could be fair to the cities and fair to us. So that's the staff cost that you can see a little under a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. And then we subtract the fine revenue. So that's when people commit offenses and they pay a speeding ticket and they get a DUI fine and other misdemeanor fines and revenue. A portion of that goes to the city, large portion goes to the state. And it, it's at least helping some of the cities to offset the cost. So it's a little under sixty-six thousand dollars in revenue that can fluctuate, obviously, based upon how many tickets and how much revenue we get and, and if they're paying their fines. This contract cost allocation is what the county provides. And as I indicated, the board really wants to do this to support what we're doing. And our focus is on providing justice and a high level of service and making sure that our citizens are safe and that people that do commit offenses are treated fairly and, and professionally. Cause frankly, I think most people that come through our system are good law-abiding people that made a mistake. Or they're, they're not all criminals. Stop sign violation, a speeding ticket, which I'm sure we all have had. You come in there and you want to be able to talk to somebody and explain yourself and say, you know, I was speeding, but I don't have a record. Is there a chance we can do something to keep this off my record? If I don't get any tickets in a year, pay a little extra money. And if you recall, you know, we have a pretty fluid policy as long as you don't have a long list of tickets and it's nothing that's aggravating that, you know, we're going to work with people to try and encourage them to, you know, curb their driving or whatever it might be. And this might be a, a good time, cause it's in my head, I don't want to forget it. But we're actually going to a hearing officer and I think I mentioned this last year. And so essentially what the county proposed, or not really the county, it's the state, came to me and said, would you be interested in having a hearing officer handle, um, and hearing the first appearances essentially from speeding tickets and other minor cases? And Scott County is going to do this, and so they wanted to hire a person to do this. It's an attorney that they'll hire. And so, um, I, I, I didn't have reluctance, but I wanted to hesitate for a moment because I really think we do a great job in Carver County. And I think we're recognized as that when other visiting judges come from Dakota and, and Scott. They, they remark how well things work and they're very efficient. Cause we had a law clerk that was down in court, a prosecutor in court that could talk to these people. And they have to wait for three hours and take off a half a day. Um, but it made good sense for a cost savings, cause you'll recall that we, um, eliminated two law clerk positions. And, cause they, they, that's mostly what they did is they'd go to court. So we eliminated that, had saved thirty thousand dollars and we passed those costs on to the cities. So we didn't just take that and put it in our general fund and say, good for us. We, obviously that's fair to you or a percentage of that, I should say. Cause they did some other research in writing for our prosecutors in our office. But due to the pandemic, they haven't hired the hearing officer yet, but it sounds like they're going to start the hiring process. I'm going to be involved in that process because it's really critical that we make sure we have the, you know, hearing officer that is consistent with our policies and values. And so they'll be able to have a calendar of cases and set up appointments for people to come in and talk to this hearing officer. And they have a list of our policies to say, if you have a speeding ticket within three years, you don't get the stay of adjudication to keep it off your record. That's the Carver County Attorney's Office policies. Otherwise I can do this. So I don't have to go to the court, you don't have to go to the judge. And I think that's good for the citizens too, cause then they don't have to wait. So I'll be happy to report back to you all on that next year and, and hopefully it's working well. But that's what Hennepin County does, Ramsey County, a lot of other counties have done this, this hearing officer. And it doesn't mean that if the case is unresolved, that it goes back to the court. So then our prosecutors handle it. So they're still entitled to have a trial and a speeding ticket. It's just can we resolve these cases?
Is that being funded, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that being funded by the state? Is that true?
Yeah. So the state's, good question. The, the state is going to pay for that hearing officer. But it was really important that we have this coordination collaboration with our bench and with the court administrator to know that they're going to represent our office too. Because, you know, we want people to be respectful and professional and timely and, and so that's an important focus for us. That if you're meeting with somebody and they got a speeding ticket and they're afraid to come to court, we, you don't have to lecture them, you know, or, or, and, or make them feel it's the worst day of their, their month to come to court anyway. So, um, I'm confident we'll get the right person and, and ultimately it's the state that gets to determine that. But I wanted to have a voice too, make sure that, you know, we can be part of that interview process. So, um, the, the surcharge is seventy-two thousand, seven fifty-one. And that's taking the cost minus the revenue and the allocation. There is a three percent county personnel cost allowance. And we went to this a couple of years ago and we tried to look back, not forward or what is present. So what is the general cost of living that the county has? And then that's passed on to the cities. So it was three percent this year. And we'll see, um, also that three-year average of the caseload. That's how we determine in the chart that's going to follow of, well, what do we pay? You know, what do the cities pay? So I think I flipped too fast. So if you look at the three-year average from 2018, 2019, and 2020, that three-year average is fifty-nine cases for Carver. So that's five point nine percent of all of the cases of a hundred percent of the cases. You'll see CHASC obviously is almost fifty percent of the cases, you know, cause they're the biggest city. And so we take that three-year average, twenty, twenty, there were sixteen fewer cases. And, you know, who knows in 2021, you know, what it's going to be, but we'll look at that next average. And then we come up with the usage and rate comparison. So this is really the key chart of, well, what are, what's going to be the cost? And so the rate that we're proposing this year is four thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents for the city of Carver. That's an increase of a hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. So it's a slight change just because of the average and number of cases we did. And then you'll see that there aren't really profound increases or decreases, which is always good. Because then the city goes, ew, wait a minute, you know, for five thousand dollars or, you know, for the city of your size, you know, two, three thousand dollars can be significant, but it's always good news when it's not too much. So, um, but you can see that the difference in the, in the percentages there as well. And then this is a chart that I like to distribute, which just kind of tracks the number of cases and the citations that are issued. And you can see there's been a decrease, um, probably every, every department, certainly for the sheriff's department. You can see the difference, um, over the years a little bit. So there's maybe three hundred less cases, um, from the year before. All right. So before I go on to just an update, are there any questions about those numbers or anything that?
Any questions? Nope.
Okay. So the Veterans Court is a program that we started in 2014, I think it was. And this is a alternative court and it's an intensive court for veterans that qualify under our, um, requirements. And they go in through a different system really, but they're still in our criminal justice system. And it's proven to be a really highly effective court. We knew it was going to be because of the history of other veterans courts. And we're really proud of, of our veterans court that we've had. And we've had a lot of successes in it, a lot of graduates. We've really changed lives. And it's a credit to that veteran court system and the collaborators in Carver County. And it's a credit to the veterans, the defendants who did the hard work and wanted to turn their lives around. Now, we're part of the state system. So we went through an intensive training and we have to have all the requirements and numbers and statistics that we have to follow for the state qualification and that allows us to get some funding. But here's the challenge we're facing is they set a number of twenty cases that you have to have of our size. Well, we have captured most of our veteran offenders. We only have so many veterans in Carver County, right, that have committed crimes. And so we, we have struggled for the last few years of keeping up with our numbers. So we've tried to be creative and fortunately now what we've done is we've collaborated with Dakota County. So they have joined Carver County and they're going to send people to our veterans court. And that'll help everybody. It'll help our numbers. It'll help their citizens, cause we already have everything up and running. And hopefully we can stay in good status with the state. If not, then our board would have to look at funding that. It's eighty thousand or more a year. And I know they're committed to that, but it would be best if, obviously, if we could, you know, maintain that consistency with the state, but we can't control our numbers. We can't, you know, we have to have our criteria of who qualifies and who doesn't. And it's too bad because we're doing a good job of serving our citizens, but the state has this, I don't want, it's not a random number, but some of it doesn't make as much sense because, well, what do Carver County, how do they get twenty people? So, and maybe we'll get some other, um, counties to join us. Scott County has their own veterans court and they fund it through their board. So they're not under the, it's not scrutiny, but it's the qualifications requirements of the state. But that's been a really good program. And then we started a drug court in, uh, 2020. And so we were able to obtain a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And, um, that grant allowed us to start this drug court. And, um, really it's been, it's also been a success. And really what it does, and I, I here, have here some notes, so I can be accurate about this. But it's a program that's really designed for high-risk, high-need offenders, which is kind of different than what you would normally think. But it actually, it's not for these drug kingpins. It's not what it's for, but it is for high-risk offenders. And they have a lot of data that proves that this is the, the individuals that need to be served. And they have a lot of best practices and we have to comply with all those best practices cause we are compliant with the state requirements. We went through intensive training. And again, we have this great collaboration. But this program takes about eighteen to twenty-four months for offenders. It's a five-phase program and they use a team approach. And so it delivers this evidence-based, uh, practice, which has treatment, intensive supervision, which is very important, random and frequent drug and alcohol testing. Again, a pretty key, key component, which has been challenging during the pandemic. Right? You want to stay on top of, of this. It includes, uh, frequent court appearances. Come in before the judge. Judge Wenzel's been on the drug court and done an excellent job. How's it going? I saw here that you had a positive test. What's going on? You know, those types of things. I want to encourage you. There's consequences too. You know, you might have to serve a weekend in jail or something because you have to have that, those consequences. But we've had a, a couple of graduates and that's been exciting to see them advance throughout the entire program and say, it's the best thing that ever happened to me, that I turned my life around and now I'm healthy and I have these mentors and I have a job and I have a stable, uh, life. So it's really been a, a positive program. And we couldn't do it without the support of the leaders, eh, of the board, of the council, of others that believe in this, of law enforcement, our judges, because it, they're doing above, they're going above and beyond. I mean, they already have their caseloads and they believe in it and they really see a lot of value in helping these people. But it's not a free pass, you know, to get out of jail. I mean, there are, it's a, it's a harder program. And frankly, our chief public defender, who's been also, uh, superb with this program. And, and he indicates, you know, it's harder than going through the traditional course of criminal justice. I mean, he tells them that and a lot of them just go, I'd just rather just do my time or whatever, because it's a commitment and, and they hold you accountable for what you do, but we also support them. So that's been a really positive program. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about is, well, how has the pandemic affected us and the criminal justice system?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, yeah.
Before we move on. So the Veterans Court, I have a question. When you said that you were bringing Dakota County folks over. How does that work if they're charged with a crime in Dakota County, but now we see them in court here? And then let's say they were having a fine. Where does that fine go? Does that go back to Dakota? Even though our staff time tried it?
So they will take the plea and get sentenced in Dakota County. But they'll transfer then the conditions to Carver County Veterans Court. I believe the fine revenue would probably stay with Dakota County if they have. We're willing to take that on because we believe in this program and we want this funding as well. But we had a number of meetings. They have a new county attorney. Kathy Keena is the new county attorney. Jim Backstrom retired after, you know, decades of his leadership there. And so Kathy and I, um, had a couple of meetings and talked about this and the logistics of it. And we had to get permission through the state, of course, right? There's some, some of that. And we just got that this week, that they're going to allow them to come in and join us. But, but you're right, you know, they can't be, they can't take the plea here. I guess our prosecutors do handle conflict cases for certain, you know, counties, but this isn't a conflict case. It's just using our resources. But it's going to help us in the end anyway. And I think we're, we're all committed to justice, no matter whether it happens in Koochichin County or in our county. And, cause eventually they're going to have some carryover, but yeah, that's a good question.
If they did have a jail term imposed, would they spend that in Carver County jail system or in Dakota County jail system?
I don't know the answer to that. It, it, it could be either, but, but that's a good question. It, it, it probably might depend upon, it probably would be Dakota County, cause that's probably where they reside, right? And, cause you're right, those are extra costs too. If they're going to do jail time, if they have to do thirty days in jail. Um, you know, we charge for the jail as well. But I think we're working through those logistics and we wanted to get their commitment and also, you know, their probation to make sure who's going to, you know, supervise them. It's part of our department through the veterans court. But, you know, they'll have some oversight as well over there. I don't know how many cases they're going to have. You know, we, we've taken probation violations into our veterans court to try to get our numbers up. We've taken, you know, other individuals that we've tried to really broaden it, because we just don't want to lose that status. We've done so much and we've had this momentum. But bringing them in is, has been helpful. And I would think we'd be able to capture some, you know, with, with them. And a lot of it's the screening in the, in the beginning with law enforcement in the jails to get them early on to find out, are they veterans? Cause they're not going to raise their hand and say, hey, I heard about this veterans court. Do I get it? And they have to be proactive.
Right.
And so we have a coordinator that does that, contacts our jail every day on bail to find out, hey, are any of these people, you know, veterans? So we can get them in early and then see if they qualify. It's a really violent crime. We're not going to have them in our drug court or our veterans court, right? Cause my goal and primary goal is, is public safety. I mean, that's, that's the goal as prosecutors, is public safety. I mean, we, obviously we have rehabilitation, but we want to make sure our citizens are safe. And we don't want to take a grave risk of somebody that maybe belongs in the traditional system. So thanks for that question. Any other questions about drug court or treating, or the treatment court?
The presentation.
Yeah.
So on, one of the slides on mine, it's slide four, a case of my location.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry if you already covered this. Is that where the incident or citation happened or is that where the individual lives?
It would be where the citation is issued. So somebody speeding in Carver, they get a ticket. That's going to be one for Carver and, and the city, yeah. So the pandemic, I know, has affected everybody profoundly. And we spent, it seems like the first six months or a year, gosh, just meeting and talking about how are we going to maneuver through the pandemic, just like you, right? In the board meetings or with our divisions and things like that. And I think we've really done well in Carver County and trying to make sure that everybody's safe. In our office, we probably had for most of the pandemic, ninety percent that were working from home. And we really learned that people can work from home, our employees can work from home very well and be, um, you know, just as productive, if not more productive. And our attorneys certainly can. You know, the county had a space problem. We don't have a lot of space in our office left. Well, we don't really have a space problem now. Because we still have a large percentage of our attorneys, especially our civil attorneys. Cause they come in, if they have court, you know, let's say they have a commitment. Somebody that might be mentally ill or chemical, they'll do court, they'll be in that day. Other times they can be working from home. Our prosecutors have to be in court more. They're having more in-court, uh, in-person, in-court hearings. But we're still doing, you know, most of our bail hearings via Zoom, our first appearances. But contested hearings you'll have to have in person and trials as well. We actually tried eleven jury trials during the pandemic in Carver County. And so I would guess, I didn't, you know, take a, uh, you know, a, a, a poll of all the counties, but we probably did some of the most trials and we just kept doing it. Thank goodness we did, cause we don't have this massive backlog. Ramsey County colleague told me that works there, so they have a thousand cases backlog. They weren't trying cases, a lot of cases. Scott County's really backed up too. You know, they weren't trying as many cases. So we tried these cases and, you know, we didn't have any issues. I'm not aware of anybody that got COVID or hospitalized from this and they practiced, you know, the distancing and everything. And, and these are individuals that I couldn't in good conscience release because of the danger. But they're entitled to have an expeditious speedy trial, which is reasonable under certain cause. You can't keep somebody in custody for, you know, years in jail when they're still presumed innocent. So, um, kudos to everybody that worked hard, you know, during this time, cause it's scary certainly to go in and you're in this courtroom. But, so we've done eleven jury trials and we handled a lot of other cases. So we're not really in dire straits in Carver County with our backlog, which is really nice. And, and so right now, we have more people that are working in our office, are back, you know, in the office. But we're going to continue with this kind of hybrid model. And I expect that going forward after this is why not use it that works well? And we've got great partners in the county that are willing to help us with IT support and other things like that. And if people can be productive and still be service-oriented, uh, we're going to continue to do that. So, so that's all I have for my presentation. I appreciate the time and, um, you know, our partnership and, and your commitment to us continuing to prosecute and as your county attorney, I appreciate that as well.
Thank you for coming in. I appreciate you always doing the annual check-in. It's good to see you in person.
Definitely.
Um, you answered all of my questions, cause I was curious about the, the drug court and the veterans court, which we heard from you.
Yeah.
Previously. But does anybody else have any questions for the county attorney? It was a good update.
Thanks.
Great.
Thank you, Mark.
Well done. Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Moving on, construction update for the JCP Improvement Project. Erin.
Yep.
Top that presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good luck. This is where it gets less interesting now. This works here. Oh.
It's not looking good to.
I'm good for the home team. Okay, so I have an update tonight, mayor and council on the Jonathan Carver Parkway project. So the, the good news is the list is getting a lot shorter these days. So, um, we're, we're getting down to the end of the season and fortunately, we're also getting down on the list of things to do. So those two things are correlating with each other. Um, some big things have happened over the last couple of weeks since we last talked. Obviously, the biggest of which was the, the final paving on the corridor. So all the paving's done now. Um, if you've driven the corridor recently, you already have some of the striping down on the road. So primary focus for this week is to finish up the striping and then also get all the, the permanent signage up on the side of the roads. And then, um, gardener's going to be in again. They're working on the landscape plantings. So that, that's kind of the second batch of landscape plantings, which should pretty much finish things up along the, the main corridor here, uh, this week. So all the trees should be in. Uh, next week is going to be a big week. Um, a lot of, a lot of site cleanup, you know, odds and ends miscellaneous work that is going to be happening as we kind of bring the month in here. But, um, what Eureka is saying, um, the contractor, by the end of next week, they're hoping to have pretty much, you know, most of the barrels and stuff should be cleaned up. So the corridor should be looking a lot more clean and finished, um, by the end, by the end of next week. So there'll be some, um, daily lane closures just to kind of facilitate some of the minor work that'll be occurring off the side of the road. So you'll see, um, cones out there during the day, but, um, it should be limited to daily closures here, um, very shortly. So that'll be nice. Things will look a lot more finished. Um, a few key things for the remainder of the season, there's a lot of miscellaneous electrical work that's still happening. Um, the rapid flashing beacon for the crossing, um, south of the roundabout, they're still working on that. And then the fire station, um, warning system, um, that, they're still waiting on a electrical component for that or something. So there's some of these odds and ends that have to still come together. And then also some of the, the site amenities, um, the monuments that are by the roundabout. Um, still waiting on a couple of components there and then that's going to be, um, getting installed. Some fencing, for example, on top of the retaining walls, um, those are still being fabricated. So a lot of, um, what we call like, you know, punchless type work is going to be happening here over the next several weeks. So, uh, that's really where things are sitting at this point. Uh, just a few pictures from the end of last week. This is looking southbound, um, at, or at White Pine Way. So see the striping machine out there? They're, they're grinding in the grooves for the new paint that's going to be going down. And then just looking north, kind of in the same area. So you can see even by the end of last week, they were trying to make things look a lot more cleaned up out there. So that's pretty much the big update for, for now, so.
Just, uh, one little update to the, for the council on this is, uh, we got our last meeting or two meetings ago. We talked about a potential ribbon cutting and this had some dialogue with the county and the mayor on this. And there are still quite a, quite a few things, um, especially down by the roundabout with the monuments that, um, we thought it'd be best to postpone that until everything's done, rather than having a ribbon cutting and then still having barrels and construction equipment out there. So just wanted to check in with the council to make sure that you are in agreement with that direction or had other thoughts.
That's fine. Any questions? Erin, I have just a couple. You talked about fencing. by some of the retaining walls. Is there'll be a permanent fence that goes in by the underpass on that east side?
Yeah. Oh, on the like where the loop is, you're saying?
Where the snow fence is? Yeah.
Yeah, they're actually, that's actually planned to go in this week, I believe. So.
Okay.
Yeah, S Brothers is the manufacturer of the fence. They, after the wall is getting sold, they measure everything so it fits all perfectly. So that's there's a lead time just with physically manufacturing the metal fencing. So that'll be happening here in a few weeks, but the the one by the underpass should be going in this week.
Okay. And then Brent, I had a question. I know, like, you don't necessarily mow brand new grass. I'm not even sure if it's grass or weeds, but these are looking awfully natural by community park.
Oh.
Is there any way that this will be like few mowings?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I knew where you were going. You just threw me. No, the I'm smiling because as Erin and both of the Erin's know that this is something that we talk about quite a bit and that I've shared some concerns with the county staff and Bolton and Mink team that not quite sure what we're looking at quite yet, like what's been seeded, what's
It looks awfully weak.
To be maintained. And I know they have seeded in some areas, but there's some weeds growing up. So Jonathan Nelson, who that might, that name might sound familiar. He was kind of our landscape architect on the project. I asked him, he's going to be going up this weekend, walking the site with Chad and getting an idea of like, is our is seeding being done to spec? What's the condition of the boulevards, et cetera? It's the contractor's responsibility to maintain that since there in some areas, it's not kind of smooth to take our city mowing equipment across, but very well timed and it always helps me to make a better argument when I say the mayor asked me about this last night. So thank you for that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, moving on, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by council member Henry. And I'll make the second, the second by Mayor Johnson. All any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Moving on to business items, eight point one, the livable communities demonstration account. Ms. Pitt.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Council. This meeting is just hard hitting fun tonight. I'm going to give a brief overview about the livable communities demonstration account or what I'm going to refer to as the LCDA throughout the rest of the presentation. So the the LCDA program is run through the Met Council. And there's funding available for cities that participate in the program. So to be eligible to apply for their grants, you need to be a participant in the program. A couple FYIs about the program. Currently, there's nine million dollars available sitting in that fund. The communities that are part of the program have the eligibility to apply for. The program is a little bit different than some other programs that we apply for. So one of the biggest differences that I think probably excites most city councils is that there's no match required. So you can make an application for that X number of the nine million dollars no match was required. And there are a couple of things that typically aren't covered in typical grant applications to other agencies that are under this program. So a big one that caught my eye was site acquisition, not something that's usually covered. There's design and engineering fees, again, not typically covered. It's usually the work. It's not the front end of design and engineering fees. And then kind of the nitty gritty stuff, streets, public utilities. A big one right now that we're seeing in Carver and I think across the state is also broadband, which is, I think, an exciting piece. If you are thinking about a large scale multifamily building, if you can get fiber to that building, I think it's definitely a plus. So some of those details are important to think about that it's just not the typical program that we apply for. So what are the requirements? Should we choose to move forward with the program? So there are two things that we need to do. First is adopt a housing action plan. Fun fact, it's the section of the comp plan that we've already approved. So that box is checked. But the city's housing action plan that we're working on to be presented to city council in December will be a nice supplement to that. I think will give a little bit more flavor to our comp plan chapter that there is a little bit of our anecdotal information, but I think the housing action plan will speak to a lot of the work that we did with the CDA and then through the strategic planning that we completed as a group. And then we need to adopt housing goals, which I have on another slide. There's no penalty for not meeting these, their goals. It's the Met Council's work to try to help us get there with the grant dollars that are available. So the city historically has been part of the program. It's typically once every ten year reenrollment. So we're due, it essentially goes with the comp plan cycle. Another thing to think about is that the city did receive funding through the LCDA program for the Carver Crossing project. So if you think about the last time we talked about this, it was for the CDA project of building two that they were looking through funding for funding through the LCDA. We had to be the applicant because the cities are the participants, not the CDA. So we entered in agreement with them that we would be the applicant for their project. The project fell short for a variety of reasons, but they did move forward with that application. Met Council goals that I talked about, those affordable housing goals that we need to create and adopt. So for twenty twenty one to twenty thirty, it's between two hundred and ninety and five hundred and twenty eight. So some information about the previous comp plan with several caveats is that the twenty ten to twenty twenty goal was nine hundred and ninety five affordable units. That feels drastically higher. It's nearly double. But in that plan, we contemplated population in twenty fifteen at eleven thousand four hundred and eighty and in twenty thirty at twenty one thousand one hundred and sixty. So that larger population meant more housing units. We had more of the affordable burden that we needed to meet because we had what we thought were going to be many more homes than we do realistically today. So this is taken straight out of the housing section of our comp plan where you'll see the five hundred and twenty eight units is already referenced in the section. So we've adopted this goal through the comp plan. LCDA just requires it in that resolution. You'll also see that through the program, the five twenty eight is kind of our magic number. Currently, we have five hundred and forty one units that are considered affordable, but our unit number is really skewed. So we have four hundred and thirty three of those units that meet the income of fifty one to eighty percent of that AMI, the area median income, where we fall pretty far behind at the thirty percent area median income with just thirty eight units. So we do meet the requirement, but our numbers are really skewed. And I think something that Met Council would commit to working with us to say, how can we get some of these numbers to match a bit better for the housing goals that we have? That is my overview. If you have questions, I will open it up.
Erin, my one question is the memo says we're re-enrolling for the next ten years, but I think the resolution and you mentioned that it's to couch up next to our comprehensive plan is from twenty two until thirty.
To be super honest, I made a little flub last year and I forgot about it.
Okay. So we are re-enrolling for ten
Correct.
Years?
It will go until twenty thirty. So the program restarted in twenty twenty one. We're doing a little catch up this year.
Okay, got it.
Open catch up.
Thank you.
Erin, when we talk about the thirty percent of AMI, so units affordable to households, so does that, does the Kelly vouchers and and the housing credits and things like that, is that factored into these or how does that work?
They are. So projects like Carver Crossing are included in these numbers.
Okay.
But where they fall is different project by project. I think Carver Crossing was sixty percent AMI.
Okay.
So above that thirty percent threshold.
Okay.
Kind of hits the next tier up.
Okay. And then it splits tiers also. I mean, do you?
It does. Yep.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? No, clear. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one forty five dash twenty one entering into the LCDA program with the Met Council.
I will second.
A motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Brent, updates?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. Maybe a nice little transition. Was notified by the county administrator, Carver County Administrator Dave Hemsey that the county board has allocated two million dollars toward the CDA's affordable housing project. So they own land next to what we all know as Carver Crossing. And so not sure what their schedule is or how that fits with kind of their development plan. But Erin and I will be meeting with CDA staff sometime, probably in the next month to get an idea of of how this works. Doesn't necessarily mean that that solves their funding gap to develop a project, but certainly is significant. And then related to that, the county is interested in having kind of a conversation with staff and the mayor related to affordability in the community. And so we're going to be meeting with the county administrator and I believe at least one county commissioner on this to talk about housing goals and affordability and different concepts. So I will be providing an update once we have that conversation. The council about a month ago approved the downtown sidewalk project. The contractor that we selected, unfortunately, his, the team has been hit with COVID and so they're a little bit behind schedule. So we're anticipating that project's going to be done in the spring of twenty two rather than later on this fall. So a little update on that. Earlier this week, I sent out a calendar invite for a joint council planning commission and staff training on Monday, November eighth at six thirty PM. And so that's a a training related to diversity, inclusion and bias. It was one of the goals of the council and our within our strategic plan. The trainer is works is an attorney at Green Espal, I think I'm saying that right. But comes very, very highly recommended from other cities. And frankly, I I think a really benefit to the city in this instance in that she works with municipalities on a regular basis. So it's kind of merging those two topics where I think there'll be some really real world applications that we can all appreciate. And I think it'll help advance that conversation. So looking forward to that.
I would say Brent, I'm not available on Monday, the eighth. Is there a way to watch this afterwards or get information about it after the fact?
Probably not able to watch it, but we certainly could take materials and probably colleagues on the council could provide an overview along with myself at the following work session.
Okay.
What time is it again?
Six thirty on the eighth. You accepted the invite already, so you have to. Then two more things. The so the, as I think I had mentioned, I attended a conference from the State Preservation Society and one of the the pieces that they recommended is every so often, we should do a review of our historic preservation ordinance. And so I mentioned that to the HPC at their last meeting. And so part of that process is a review of that ordinance. It hasn't been done at least the the time that I've been here. And so Dave Anderson is going to be attending, might be the first time a city attorney has attended an HPC meeting. So trailblazer. So but I think a really good opportunity. So Dave's going to be coming in. There's and council member Mock can can probably share more detail if she wants on this, but there there have been some maybe unresolved or unsettled issues that the HPC has related to regulation and enforcement, et cetera. And so rather than just delivering an ordinance saying, well, this is what we've prepared for you. We're going to have Dave sit in and have a facilitated discussion on challenges related to the code and enforcement. You know, we looked at several other ordinanceers related to historic districts in the state. And so I think this will kind of provide a maybe a more three hundred and sixty degree review of kind of where we're at. And then it'll help Dave prepare an amendment to that code section. So looking forward to that. And then with that, that transitions into the final piece. There's been some discussion recently related to how city councils can participate virtually. And I've heard from some groups, you know, the mayor was in on one of these where there was a provision related to could the could the council participate virtually if there was a COVID related issue or basically a COVID exemption. And so because there was different points of view on that, I asked the city attorney to review that and provide an update to the council.
Yeah. So, you know, typically the open meeting law requires you all to be in person unless you do the fully, you know, remote thing that I don't even know if Carver did that. I assume maybe you did it for
Yes.
handful of months. But there's always been this thirteen D point zero two provision in the open meeting law, which allows for members to participate via interactive television. Now it's interactive technology because that's an outdated term. And there was an amendment to the statute just this past year that provided up to three times a council member could participate from a remote location. And they didn't have to make that location open and accessible to the public, which is normally required if you're going to, you know, participate from a different location, you have to allow people to come in and sit and watch and do all that. That very limited exception of up to three times only applies during a state of emergency or within sixty days of the state of emergency ending. The governor ended that, our statewide emergency on July first. So that exception applied through September first. So you can't use it or rely on that exception anymore. So long story short, if you want to participate remotely, you know, there's ways to do it if you check a bunch of boxes, but one of those boxes is that you have to make your location known to the public and then you have to make sure it's open and accessible to the public. So not many cities use that. Frankly, I think it's kind of a not a great idea to to use it unless you really need to use it. But just so everybody knows that up to three times a year healthcare exception doesn't apply anymore because we're beyond sixty days from the statewide emergency ending. That's the update.
Thank you. That's it. All right, council updates. Glenn, do you want to start?
We have a planning commission meeting on Thursday. That's my update.
Mercy.
Um, we had an HPC meeting. Brent covered the whole update, so that's all I have.
All right.
I don't have anything.
Joy.
I have nothing.
Okay, that came by quick. I have a bunch of stuff. Um, let's see. So in our last meeting, I told you all that I was meeting the next day with Senator Coleman. And a few things that we talked about, given Dave and Brent's lead in, we talked about that open meeting law exemption. We, I think in our legislative priorities for twenty twenty one had something about that to give us the flexibility. And I used you as the example of, you know, you missed the last meeting because you were ill. I, you know, like, if you felt up to it and were willing to zoom in, that's an option versus missing having a seat at the table. So I talked to Senator Coleman about that. And she wasn't aware of the the issues that make this so challenging. But she said she was going to look into it. So I think that that needs to be already on our list of legislative priorities for twenty twenty two because I think we're now living in a world that if you have a sniffle or if I have a sniffle, I think we would all prefer that that person stays home. But
Right.
Missing out on that opportunity of being here and having a say is a strong driver of coming in anyways.
Well, that's a good, a good example because I certainly could have zoomed from home last week, but I was not feeling well. But I'm not going to bring the chairman to the council chambers. So.
And I appreciate you doing that and hoping I you me using
No, I'm glad you did. Glad you did.
It seems so silly. We've done this for a year. It is twenty twenty one. There's okay, stepping back off my soapbox. The other thing that I mentioned that I was going to be talking to Senator Coleman about was the sex offender ordinance. It is very, very, very much on her radar. And there are three pieces of legislation. She told me that she's already preparing for the next session. One has to do with preemption. So some of the things that Dave was telling us about two weeks ago was that a lot of sex offender ordinances aren't defendable because of the preemption issues with the state. So she's working on legislation that would take out that preemption portion piece, really kind of handcuffing us as far as what we could do at a local level. The other issue that deals with sex offenders that she is working on is apparently when a sex offender is paroled, you only have to wear your monitoring that ankle bracelet for a certain percentage of that parole. She wants to extend it, if not make it, for the entire duration of parole. So that's number two out of three that she's working on. And then Dave also talked to us when we were going through that potential ordinance about talking about other areas where kids congregate. So maybe it's the pond that freezes over in the winter and that's where So maybe it's the, um, pond that freezes over in the winter and that's where everybody hangs out and goes ice skating. Maybe it's a bus stop. Maybe it's Casey's because kids go down there and hang out and get, you know, drinks and snacks after school. Um, really kind of firming up what can and can't be, um, in that category, if you will. So, those are the three areas that she said that she is working on and that she's going to be pushing hard for legislation in the 2022 session. So, um, with that, I know just enough about what she's working on to be dangerous. Um, so if you guys are interested in any other information, we can have her back. I would imagine that she's going to be back here within the next, hopefully six months because I know everybody's pretty good, her and Representative Nash are pretty good about coming in here at the beginning of the session. So, um, moving on, um, we had a Minnesota Mayors Association meeting. Um, I am now on the board for that. So I am the secretary, which is a role I'm super excited about. Um, the Royces, Tara and Nate from the Future Home, the Getaway Motor Cafe, held a roadside cleanup on County Road 40, not last Saturday, but the Saturday before last. And a great weather and a really good turnout and that was a, a good event. Um, Brent alluded to it, but we met with the folks from Metro Cities where we talked about what we were doing and what we were working on and what was important to the city of Carver. So we talked about some of the, the preemptive, um, housing legislation that we're anticipating to be, um, on the floor in St. Paul next year. Um, and then we also talked about the open meeting law stuff. So, um, it was good to connect with them. Um, last week, I had a meeting with three deputies from the Carver County Sheriff's Department. And, um, this is a little bit of a spoiler alert, but it's something that I'm really excited about. I think you guys have heard me say that, um, I was going to see what it would take to get the lights on program here in Carver County, which is, so Christie, your headlight burns out, you're pulled over. Um, instead of getting a ticket or a fix-it ticket, you actually get a voucher that's good for up to $250 to get your headlight replaced or repaired. Um, so that's going to be something that's coming to Carver County. So, um, there'll be more information on that. And I've asked one of the deputies to come and kind of explain the ins and outs of that program. Um, also last week, I attended Chad's Public Services team meeting and learned all about snowplowing for the upcoming season. So I am good and ready to go into a truck if and when needed, much to, to branch the grid. I know he's as excited as you are about that, Glenn. Um, we had a, a business alliance meeting last Friday and we're working on kind of reformatting that group a little bit.